This is going to be City of Port Ritchie, City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 14. At this time, I'd like to invite Pat Rogers for the invocation.
Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you for our mayor and council and ask for your pure wisdom from above for their decisions for tonight. And Lord, thank you for the staff being compatible and flowing together for the best working order of our city. Give Rachel and Pam the vision to find the best options for our city. Laura, please have peace in the homes of our first responders. Thank you for our police and fire departments, and please keep them safe and provide everything they need to do their jobs effectively for the city. And Lord, we're looking to you to bring them home safely every night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor William Ditmer.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell. Let the record show that Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilman Todd McLaren.
Here.
Councilman Tom Consella.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Duke.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve council minutes.
Motion to approve council minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to open. What's that?
That includes the workshop minutes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up with comments from our general public. I'm going to start with Pat Rogers. Welcome.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. I'm coming here in representative tonight for Light of the World Tabernacle. And we are joining, asking the city to join us for a fish fry in the park on Saturday, October 30th. And prior to that, if we have the police permission, they'd like to do a walk from Walmart parking lot over to the park, which would be in asking for people to help pray for our city to just do the best we can. And there's a flyer in there for you. This is a preliminary flyer. We'll work out some of the specific details. And if it's approved, Pastor Leonard will apply for the permission to have this event at the park.
Thank you. There's several people that are signed up, and then I'll call on people who are not signed up after we get through the list. Don, and I'm going to do the best I can. Smolowicz? Welcome. And just so you know, there was two other people that signed up. There was Mrs. Hanville, and there were two Hanvilles that signed up, and they asked for their time to go to you, is what it looks like here?
Yes.
Okay. So what I want to do is we'll give. We normally give at least an extra minute time, but we'll give you five minutes to start, and then if you have to go over a little bit, we'll work with you, okay?
I certainly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and staff. My name is Dawn Smolowicz. I am the Communication Workers of America, also known as CWA, Local 3179 Vice President. I am speaking with you this evening on behalf of our brothers and sisters of the City of Port Ritchie. We are here this evening to remind you that the Communication Workers of America Local 3179 has worked tirelessly with the City of Port Ritchie for many years. Through managerial changes, unforeseen vacancies, the COVID pandemic, as well as contractual negotiations, our members, your employees, have stepped up, completed tasks and done work that normally isn't assigned to them to ensure that your city, their city of Port Ritchie continues to function and that the residents and the community are served. The City of Port Ritchie, with respect, this council, have now decided that they will not bargain in good faith on a successor agreement with CWA. The CWA has followed all of the contractual rules for negotiations. We sent the letter of intent to bargain. We prepared proposals for consideration. We met, and without discussion or consideration, city administration advised there would be no changes, and perhaps there would be no wage increases either. This is not good-faith bargaining. With no ability to discuss, to tentatively agree, to update or make changes, or for the membership to have a vote, is not good-faith bargaining. When the CWA negotiating team presented articles for consideration, they did so in order to update an outdated agreement. So verbiage changes and cost-free benefits would be clarified to create an updated three-year agreement which would benefit the city, our members. However, when our articles were presented, there was no discussion, there was no consideration, and there was no bargaining. When the CWA presented these proposals for the employees of the City of Port Ritchie, it was the intent to show that the City of Port Ritchie cares. Cares to retain, motivate, and excel your employees. Cares to ensure a living wage, partial dependent care coverage for the families that you see before you this evening, to provide longevity benefits for 10 or more years of service, and accrued time sharing for your employees, our members, who are experiencing a medical emergency, as well as many others. We have prepared a packet for you of these proposals, and they will be given to you this evening. They are here. Do you really want to be the city that doesn't stand by its employees? Doesn't want to reward the value of your employees? Doesn't want everything, doesn't want to do everything to retain your employees? We don't think so. Our CWA employees keep your city running. They keep your residents, friends, and neighbors happy and proud to be residents. Isn't it time that the city take care of the CWA employees? We think so. We are recommending and requesting that additional negotiating dates be set so that the city and CWA can get back to the bargaining table, which is what's best for this city and your outstanding employees. Let's get back to bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all that signed up. I see several other people from the public that may want to speak that are not signed up. Anyone who wishes to speak? Show of hands. Welcome. Come on up to the podium. If you can, just please state your name and address, and you have your three minutes to speak, okay?
Frank Bittari, 5118. Bem's Court, Port Ritchie, Florida, 34668. You know why I'm here. I just want to know if you plan to do anything about this matter? You don't want to answer one question? Like I said, I got a report about you here tomorrow morning. If you don't want to answer me, you can tell me right now. I will do everything I can to get this taken care of. You want to answer me about any of this matter? This is the law. The law says what you're supposed to do about these people having dogs, which are not allowed to have dogs, where they are not able to take, they are not capable of taking care of their own selves, but yet they have a dog dying and suffer. I got a thing on my phone here at 77 degrees. The asphalt is approximately 123 degrees. At 87 degrees, the asphalt is about 146 degrees, the temperature. But you're okay with these people, homeless people, without the normal conscious of brains to be having these dogs, where they don't have no shots, which is the law? If they don't have shots, the dog can be taken away from them. They can't afford none of this stuff. But you're allowing this to happen. This is the law for you to take these dogs that are suffering, and they're living their lives in hell, to take these dogs away from them. You plan to do anything about that? Or should I do everything I can to take care of it on my own? You will not hear from me, but you will hear from people above you. I had dinner with people over the weekend. They got bad, just higher than anybody here, just about higher than anybody in the state. By the way, Florida's in the top three most corrupt states in the country. Did you know that? Where's the mayor before you? In jail? You plan to do or say anything about this matter? You can't, or you're afraid to? I'm not trying to be rude to you, guy, but I just like, I just tried to say it as it is. I'm not here to hurt nobody or bother us all in the world. I fight for people. I help out people. Ever since I was a kid, I helped out people. I got a ton of money. I got a lot of money. A lot many people know that. And I could do a lot of things with what I have. I give money away, not to say I'm whatever, but I help people. And I don't like when people don't do us right. It bothers the heck out of me, and I'll always fight for people that can't really do much on their own. I take, I took two people to the supermarkets, older women to the supermarkets yesterday. Tomorrow, I'm taking two different people to a church to get food for free. I don't take nothing. I don't want nothing. I do this just to help people. These dogs, they can't speak for themselves, but somebody has to speak for them. So I'll ask you in a proper way. Don't you think it would be the right thing to do to try to help out these poor creatures living their lives in hell, when they can't even speak for themselves? Do you understand this? Do you care about this at all? I guess that means no. So I'm going to take that as we're on film here, as you plan to do nothing about this matter at all. Nothing. It is the law. So therefore, tomorrow morning, I'm going to start making phone calls. I got someone very close to me who I was with Friday, who I'm going golfing with in October, retired from the CIA. My family. There's a few other people, all on a police force with high-ranking jobs, that have all retired. I give, they give me some help on what to do. These are my best friends and some of my family. And again, I don't step on people's toes, but I don't like when people don't do what they're supposed to do. And I'm not trying to be mean to anybody, and I think you were a bit rude while you were talking last week, a couple of weeks back. But don't worry, I got everybody's card here, and all these names are going to go through, because I'll be in touch with Tallahassee through a friend of mine, my family member, who gave me a number to call a person in Tallahassee. And he's going to get these names. You people will probably get phone calls from them. There's more people going to get involved after this being done. Anybody? Want to ask one question about this matter?
I appreciate.
I'm going to do everything I can in my power to make sure this gets taken care of legally and by law.
Sorry, you, your three minutes.
My time is up. But when Tallahassee calls you up, you're going to talk to them. You won't have to talk to me. When I get in touch with the people in the news, and they come down here with cameras and news people to ask you questions, I'm quite sure you'll have to answer them too.
Sir.
I have a lot more people going to be involved in this than just me.
Sir, your time's up, okay?
My time is up?
Yes, sir.
Maybe your time is up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Please have a seat.
So you don't care about these poor dogs on the streets dying and suffering and living life in hell?
Thank you.
That's pretty sad. Pretty sad. And I'm not here to be rude or to bother anybody, but I just feel bad for these poor innocent creatures that can't do nothing for themselves.
Would anyone else like to speak? From the general public? Show of hands. Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Autritoth 9420 Cochise Lane, Port Ritchie, 34668. I've been here several times, complained about the same thing over and over again. One of your officers called me a bitch for no good reason, other than he was having a bad day. I have submitted multiple complaints. I have tried to see Police Chief Robinson. He refused to see me. I finally got an appointment to see Mr. Dudette. First one, he didn't bother showing up, but I persisted, and I made another appointment, and I did, was able to express my concerns. However, he said he would get back with me. That was over two months ago. I don't know what you can do. All I know is that calling someone a bitch while they're sitting in front of Walmart waiting to pick somebody up is wrong. Very wrong. And at any point over the last year, someone could have reached out to me and said, hey, we talked to this officer. He apologized. We're very sad that this happened. It won't happen again. But nobody bothered to do that. So. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, we're going to move on. I'm going to pass our comments from our city manager, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ongoing projects dredging Canal's 26A and 1 haven't had any update from county or treasury, so we await Treasury's decision. I did communicate with Mr. Martin with Ayers Coty River Landing Project. We've received a preliminary cost estimate for the components of Phase 1. I'll have that in your packet next, in two weeks. So you have the same information that I do. Just got that this morning, I believe. Topography is complete for the project. They now are in the conceptual design phase, basically working in the office now instead of in the field. ARPA. On your agenda this evening is a consideration of the ARPA agreement. That is what basically binds us to conditions of accepting the ARPA funds. I'll be in Newport next week to discuss Newport's plans and how they went about developing their plans and ideas, kind of pick their brain and see what they might have that we could use. Staff are continuing to participate in information sessions, both the Florida League of Cities and the National League of Cities. There's a lot of information coming out from those two organizations. A lot of it's the same information. I'll be on a conference call with White House staff tomorrow. We've been asked to submit questions. We've also been given guidance to not submit questions about specific projects, which is what all of the cities want to know, is our project approved? So hopefully, there'll be some useful information. Obviously, I'll get that back to you in our next council meeting. So finance and department heads are tracking what we believe will be reimbursable expenses, both things that we purchase and time spent on ARPA-related activities. So we're talking about that every Monday morning with department heads. Rachel's got a tracking system, and when the time comes, we'll have a list of expenses that we will submit for reimbursement. Staff is also developing an infrastructure project list. As you all know, water, sewer, and broadband are allowable expenditures and probably one of the easiest to quantify. We know what water, sewer, and broadband looks like, and so we're making a list of projects. Obviously, when that list is, is ready for presentation, we'll bring it to you, and you can give us some guidance on what's important. But we're in the process of developing that list. And just a reminder, we've got one more budget meeting next Thursday, the 23rd, at 5:30 here at City Hall. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, I stand for your questions.
Yes, I, I wanted to touch base. I know that, and I don't know if I can ask this. I know that there were some discussions that we've had in terms of the union negotiations. Can I talk, can I ask him about this here, or is that not a proper venue for that?
Can you ask who?
City management. Because the discussions we had were, I think, held in private for union negotiations.
I'm not going to stop you from asking any questions.
And I'm not asking what was specifically said there, but, you know, I think that we talked as a group, and we came up with where our position, and I just wanted to know what the communications have been, if any, with the union on the other side, so that whatever we talked about was relayed, and whether or not there was some discussion so that we can hopefully, you know, close out any, any issues with the union.
Right. So the city staff team did meet with both the PBA and CWA representatives, relayed the, the position of the city. And following that meeting, I put that position into writing and mailed it to both presidents of the two respective organizations. Apparently, that's a new way of communicating, and both presidents have requested an additional sit-down, and those are in the planning process. So Patricia is coordinating calendars. So we'll sit down with them again. But we have met with both, both unions, communicated the, the position of the city clearly, and we'll sit down with them again.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure there were some open communications between the city and those unions. And anything that we need to do to help, just, you know, if there's anything we can do as a council to help, let us know, because I know that we made some concessions that are even in the budget. We've talked about it openly in terms of pay raises and all that. I just wanted to make sure that that's communicated.
Right. That, that was communicated clearly.
The other issue I wanted to kind of bring up and just ask you about is there's one group of employees in the city that we have that are at a lower pay scale than the surrounding areas, and that's our, in our police department, we have dispatchers, and they also dispatch for fire department. But if you look at the, the wages in the surrounding areas, we're, you know, I think we're much lower here in the city, and I didn't know if that's something that you or our chiefs have, have addressed, and if they have, if you can just give us an update.
Yeah. Chief Robinson, Chief Paula Castri, and I, with Rachel's assistance, have discussed that at considerable length. There's, there's some internal budget moves we could make to, to help with that that would be above and beyond the 2% across-the-board pay raise. But I would agree, after spending a good deal of time with Chief Robinson and hearing his concerns, I think our, our dispatchers warrant additional consideration, so.
And one of the reasons that I was saying that is I know that most of our first responders, if not all of them at this point, received a bonus from the state, and that came as part of working through COVID. I think they all received a $1,000 bonus, and the dispatchers were completely cut out of that. So that's why, you know, I was hoping to be able to address that and maybe do something for them. So I, you know, I was just hoping that you could look at that and see if there's anything.
I'll do that.
That's all the questions that I had or comments relates to city manager, city manager, Mr. Duke. Do you have anything, Mr. Consela?
The only thing I want to say on behalf of San Pebble community, they want to thank the city, the staff, and the participants on the 911 ceremony that they had. They were very pleased that the city was there, and they truly appreciate it. So again, on behalf of them, I want to thank you.
I was wondering, since you haven't mentioned it, I'm assuming you have no more information on the CRA audit?
That's correct. I've heard nothing in the last two, three weeks.
That's all I had.
At this time, I was going to open up with comments from boards and committees. I was going to open. I, I attended the 9/11 memorial. It was a fantastic event. I wanted to thank RDG. He put a lot of time and effort to coordinate that and put that together. So I wanted to thank him personally, and, you know, just say something to the meeting and recognize him. And then all the people in San Pebble that came out, it was, like I said, it was a nice event. So I appreciate the opportunity to be there and be part of it. So I just wanted to say thank you. And that's all I had for comments. Do you have anything? At this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The first item up for council business is going to be the approval of Resolution 21-05 to amend the CRA Community Redevelopment Agency Plan. And I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke.
This is the resolution that was recommended by the CRA board. In short, it removes Harbor Point from the CRA. Board recommended it to the council, as is the process, and if you so agree, Harbor Point will be removed.
Well, I'll take it, Mr. Duke. This was specially advertised in the newspaper. We went through all that. It was done properly. And after the passage of this, we'll be serving all the taxing authorities, as we did with the last motion, and it will go into effect, which getting this in just under the wire with the tax year, since we budgeted that way. So this is removing Harbor Point. I'll read the resolution by title only. Resolution number 21-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie amending the City of Port Ritchie's Community Redevelopment Agency's redevelopment plan, providing for findings, amending the community redevelopment plan to exclude certain property from the redevelopment area, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the Resolution 21-05 to amend the Community Redevelopment Agency Plan.
Second.
Is there any need for discussion? Anyone from the general public want to comment? Seeing no hands, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is the approval of the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, and that's going to go over to Mr. Duke for introduction.
So this is, this is the agreement between the city and the federal government. Has been reviewed by legal standard language across all the cities that are accepting the funds. And in short, we have to enter into the agreement if we want the money.
And just to open up discussion, I had a question for council. Anything about this agreement that is cause for concern that you saw as you looked at it?
The, though I reviewed it and came up with the same kind of comments, I think Rachel and I, as well as Mr. Duke, there was two issues. One silly, one concern, it shouldn't be silly, minor concerning reimbursement. In case we go to, someone in the city goes to a seminar, you get state $85 a day per diem we can charge, as opposed to the federal 75, that finer point. The other one was investment, where we could invest our funds, okay? Because it's now governed by the federal government. It's not a problem. In fact, those two issues came up. Florida League of Cities said they'd already been addressed, and everything else, unless you're going to have an act of Congress, literally, you're not going to change any of this. We went over it. We're fine. It's the same thing. Everybody else is signing. We got, we received this document, I think, one day after the last council meeting, which is three weeks ago, and I think they actually called and were bugging us about it the other day with an email. So they're looking for this so they can send us the money, so.
I did, I did respond to them, let them know that it's on the agenda tonight, and so they, they're expected.
Yes, so they're not going to be able to change it, but I'm fine with it from a legal standpoint. Yeah, there's a, it's, it's a contract, but at the same time, it's a, there's a whole bunch of forms in the back that we swear to do, the Davis Bacon Act, and, you know, equal opportunity employee, you know, in case we hire people to do different things. And it's a reimbursable grant. Okay? They're going to send us the money, I believe, half at first and half later. We have certain deadlines to spend that money. I think it goes three or four years. The dates are in here. And so we get the money, we spend it, then seek approval, and then they give us the approval, and then it becomes our money, for lack of a better word. We'll keep it in an appropriate fund. That's about the most questions I could, I could answer. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. I like money for the city, so I'm with the promotion.
Motion to approve American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement.
Second.
Before we vote, anyone from the general public like to speak on this issue? Seeing no hands, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item that we have is approval of memorandum of understanding for the Street Narcotics Apprehension Program, which is a SNAP program. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
This is a renewal of an ongoing program. Has been reviewed by legal, and apparently, there were a significant number of changes in the, in the document from the previous year, but it is a program that Port Ritchie PD has been involved with, collaborating with Pasco County Sheriff's Office over a number of years.
Question for Chief Robinson. Were you able to review, review this?
Yes.
Okay. Any issues that you had with that?
No. We don't.
All right. With that, I'm going to leave it open for either discussion and/or motion.
Motion to approve the MOU for the Street Narcotics Apprehension Program between Pasco County Sheriff's Office and the City of Port Ritchie.
Second.
Before we vote, anyone from the general public like to speak? Seeing no hands, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto the next item for council business, renewal of proposal for property and casualty insurance coverage. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
This is renewal of our existing insurance. We did meet with representatives from PRM. We, Rachel and I, I believe there's a slight increase, but 1% or 2%. We, Rachel and I, I believe there's a slight increase, but 1% or 2%.
1.355.
And so, no significant change in coverages. There was a lot of discussion in this process of potential upcoming changes in the future, specifically dealing with the liability of IT systems, and spam, and hacks, and that kind of thing. That's not in this. We're still covered and covered adequately, but I think they were giving us a heads up that those rates will likely change in the, in the future.
The question, I know that when we had some insurance issues in the past, that we were able to lock in for a multi-year contract, which prevented insurance company from raising more than a certain percentage. Is this part of that, or are we just year to year on this, on this plan?
We're year to year.
Okay. And the other question I had, has the city shopped, you know, to just make sure that we're competitive with other agencies?
We did not shop specifically this contract, but we can sure do that. Now, obviously, the PRM folks assure us that they're the best deal around, that they're also the ones selling us the product.
Well, are you comfortable with, with the rates versus the coverage?
Yes.
Okay. And who else was working with you on that?
Rachel and I worked on that.
Okay. And that's all the questions that I had, looking for motion and/or discussion.
Side of it, is that also, is that insurance covers from like ransomware type attacks?
Yes. And we are covered now. They were giving us a heads up that the, the amount of claims coming in for that type of incident are going up. This policy doesn't have a significant increase in that rate, and doesn't have a significant change in the coverage. But heads up, it's coming.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
I had a question. I noted in here for the workers' comp that the payroll, the total amount of the payroll actually has gone down. Is that in alignment with our current budget?
Yep, that was due to some decreases in the salaries, due to vacancies and things like that.
So it's accurate across?
Yep, it's accurate.
And I noticed they also changed the deductible in the cybersecurity component. That's acceptable? And there are no issues?
I don't believe it was up for negotiation.
There's no options.
I have no other question.
The only question I have is, is just going over this on the exposure change we have here for 2021 to 2022, 57 automobiles, number of employees, 57. If there's any increases, would there be any change? Are we committed not understanding?
Yes, so this will be reviewed yearly and updated yearly. However, this was done prior to coming year, so I didn't update with the vehicles that, but I do have an extra period updated.
So, but would we have cover for this upcoming year?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
With the addition to vehicles, employees?
Yep, so as we receive vehicles, we, they're insured, we notify PRM, but it does not change our rates until next year. Yep.
I'll have to tip you.
Motion to approve the renewal of the property and casualty insurance coverage. Second.
Before we vote, anyone from the general public? Mr. Mueller, welcome. Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I think it's incumbent on this organization to do the best you can to manage the funds that me and every other citizen in this county contribute, or in the city contribute accordingly. I think it's apparent that we should question every contract, and question another quote, or get another quote, and try to kind of get a sense of whether we are being charged fairly, or whether we could negotiate for a better rate. I think it's, I think it's good business to do, and it's something that I think it's probably an easy job, making phone calls and trying to get some reflection on whether the rates that we're being charged are okay. I don't know when the last time somebody questioned the rates, but typically, in my history, whenever you question and get other opportunities in, you might get a better rate. And I would appreciate that, as well as I believe the rest of the citizens might, doing the best we can to manage the money and funds we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Anyone else in the general public like to speak? Seeing no hands, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, would anyone like to open for discussion?
Actually, I do have a question. When was the last time we did, he brought up a good point. When was the last time we did analyze the insurance, either from PRM or took any subsequent quotes? I know I've seen PRM in successive years. I'm assuming they've been competitive the whole time, but anybody know when? I guess I'm asking Sal, because he's new and she's new, so you're.
Well, in 2019, we did, we did a review of the health insurance. It was the first time that we brought the health insurance over with the PRM. Property and casualty, we've had with them for several years. And one of the reasons why we're part of the PM, because we're part of an entire group of municipalities. I was actually trying to look at and see how many, how many municipalities are actually a part of them. And as far as property and casualty, we've had that for several years. In my knowledge, we've never, we've never shopped for them, because, you know, their rates, you know, their rates were, you know, acceptable by councils in the past. We can look for that into the, into the next year, but, I mean, and I have to ask her, I mean, are we budgeted for them for this amount this year? So the thing is, is that as far as property and casualty, we've never had issues with, and they provided all the coverage, you know, with that and the claims that we give them every year. But that's something we can definitely look into. It's just, like I said, we've had the property and casualty with them for a long time. We just, I can't remember the last time we've actually shopped for that particular type of insurance.
I mean, a 1.55% cost increase is well within inflation, so there's little concern there. But I think for the next iteration, next budget year, it would be benefit all just to double check rates.
And if I can comment, I know that we were locked in on health insurance for a couple of years, and we were locked in at a certain rate, and they couldn't go up. I think this is the last year that we're locked in. So I, with Todd, I think we should reshop not just this insurance, but all the insurances, to see what we can do, and maybe contact Florida League of Cities, because obviously, the more people you get involved, the better rates we're going to get as a city. So if we can loop in with a bigger group of people, I think the cost savings would be, would be huge within the city. So hopefully we can explore that. But we have now a whole nother budget year to shop, so that was one of the things I was going to mention as well.
We were placed in a higher bracket of our healthcare insurance due to high claims. So I'll never do the detailed type of it. The claims have been really stable.
One of the issues we switched over with the PRM as far as health insurance is that, this has been a problem with the city for many years, is that we would, we would get a new health carrier, either being, you know, United or, or, you know, Blue Cross. And that first year, we would get a great, you know, discount. They want us to board, and everything was, was good. And then the following year, because of the amount of claims we have with that particular health insurance carrier, we had to go shopping, because that particular, the one that we had, wanted anywhere from a 25% to 40% increase. Of course, every year we went shopping, shopping for health insurance. With the PRM, for the past three years, we've been not necessarily locked in contract, but locked in, locked in a rate. And after the third year, which now we're coming into, from 19 to now, is that those, those rates might fluctuate. So going into our next budget year, probably be prudent to at least shop and see what the rates will be compared, compared to with them and other health insurance carriers. But once again, we might get stuck in that same problem again with, you know, going to an independent company, because, like I said, the PRM is a collaborative, and we're now part of a whole group. So instead of shopping for insurance for 75 employees, they shop for everyone at the same time. So that's something to consider.
Any reason for further discussion? Are you guys ready to vote?
Ready.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to the next item, renewal of copier contract for City Hall and Police Department. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
The contract you have in front of you is the work of staff to review the, our previous copier contract, which they have done, spent many hours on that. This contract deals directly with Toshiba. Our previous contractor, we had a middleman, we had Toshiba products on the back end. There was a, an additional contractor between us and, and Toshiba. The cost savings are fairly significant. We estimate if we use in the next year what we used last year, we're going to save somewhere around $2,200 on same copier costs. In addition to that, Toshiba is going to give us an envelope printer, which then allows us to print envelopes without running them through the rate meter. And that's an additional savings. That's not calculated into the, into that 2,200. The other thing they're doing is giving us five PDF pro licenses, values about $900 on that. That'll assist us in our document management. So after considerable effort and looking at other copier providers, Toshiba rose to the top by a considerable margin. So would request your consideration to approve the contract, and will have Toshiba directly engaged with us rather than a, a middleman who was, shall we say, less than satisfactory.
Is this a lease to own, or just a straight lease?
Pay by the page.
Is that, I didn't.
It's a five-year lease.
It's a lease, okay.
We've been leasing for quite some time now, because with leasing, it includes service. It includes, you know, a service plan anytime these machines would go down. So the city started doing that several years ago. We, we bought copiers in the past, but of course, knowing technology, it becomes outdated and, and, you know, very quickly. And then, of course, once you've purchased that product, now any type of, you know, service that you need to, you have to pay for. So we just, we just continued what the pattern has been as far as leasing. We didn't look into purchasing that product, because we didn't think of, we thought of the service plan as much as anything else.
Is the cost in the same ballpark, whether you buy and you pay for the service versus this leasing?
Well, the.
If you know, if you don't know that.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have that information. I mean, we can, we can find out how much they would just price them out outright, you know, the machines and everything, and I can get those for, you know, for next time, if you want to go in that route. But once again, then just wouldn't be a service plan. It'd just be pretty much buying the machines. And if we had an issue down the road, during the five-year lease, you know, we, you know, we get the service plan for all the machines across the board, and technicians will come in at any time if there's a problem.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for any questions, motions and/or discussion.
Motion to renew copier contract for City Hall Police Department.
Second. But I do have a question. Looking on here, per month, I also noticed that we're being charged per sheet of paper as well.
Yes. Well, it's not the paper itself, it's just the amount of copies that you put through those machines, because of course, once the lease is up, they go ahead, you know, they reuse those machines and then sell them, you know, sell the used machines to other companies that want to buy a used product. So we are charged per copy, but once again, you know, this is just renewing a, a system that we were doing in the past per, you know, per copy. But once again, the cost per copy is 0.03 cents for color and 0.0042 for black and white.
But it adds up?
Yes, it does. Yeah. It does add up. But projecting, we got the savings from how much we printed last year, to what, you know, and giving an idea if we print the same amount. Of course, it can fluctuate, if, you know, depending, you know, how big these agendas get throughout the year, and, and other items. But we're, that's why we predicted a $2,200 savings, based on what, on what we printed last year.
And last year, we were charged per copy as well?
Same thing, same thing.
We were charged per copy. We were charged a higher price per copy. So the price per copy with this contract is lower. But yes, we get charged for every copy that goes through the machine.
Quick question from, I guess, operations standpoint. A lot of these machines are assignable to departments. Do we assign them to departments, or is there just the, i.e. you type in your department code, and then you make your copy, and then you can assign it directly to the, for the police who constantly use color copies, for lack of a better?
That, that's actually been, that's actually been a topic of conversation. We recently, at the direction of the city manager, we recently did changes with our postal, you know, postal machine to assign, to assign employee codes. So whenever anyone, of course, wants to go ahead and run mail or anything like that, they enter their code first, and then, of course, they go ahead and run their mail. That way it counts how many, you know, how many stamps that particular person ran at that time. We also, you know, when we renewed this lease, one of the first issues that we brought up to, you know, speaking to Toshiba directly, was having them assigned. So whenever anyone entered, you know, to run a copy, they would enter their number, and at least it would tell how many copies that that particular employee made.
We have a motion. We have a second. Before we vote, I wanted to open it up to the general public, if anyone wants to comment. Seeing no hands at this time, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item up is the approval of purchase for two F-250 vehicles through the utility department. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are vehicles that are budgeted for this year. And there's a considerable amount of documentation that goes along with that. The short version is they are replacing vehicles that are worn out. Our request is that you not only approve the purchase of the vehicles, but approve the surplus of vehicles that they are replacing. The purchase price is a piggyback contract. You can see it comes off the Florida Sheriff's Association, and is the same price that others in the state would get, were they buying the same vehicles.
And can you tell us about the funding source?
Yeah, they'll be funded out of the utility fund.
And that's where we're budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open up for either comments, questions, or motion.
I have a question. We compared the base price of these vehicles across multiple agencies, which was good. However, did we compare the accessories? Because right now we have a 20, circa $26,000 or $28,000 base price vehicle. But after all of a sudden done with the options, we're up to around $44,000 per vehicle. Did we do the comparison for apples to apples?
It, the three, the three Ford companies had the same pricings for the, for the options. If you want, we can provide those options. But that's why we went with the lesser vehicle of the three, you know, because the options at each, that each entity, you know, for, like, for instance, when you look at things like a backup alarm, or, you know, the, the spray liner, or anything of the other packages that they were offering, and that are included in the price, those were pretty much comparable across the board. But that's why we went with the lowest vehicle.
But I, I know, but all the vendors have different pricings on the options. They're more or less, but how do we know that the total is, is the lowest?
Well, that's like, they're not included here, but we can bring them back at a later time.
I mean, before we award to a specific vendor, I'm not necessarily opposed to the purchase, especially since it's a budgeted item, but I'd like to be sure that we're getting the lowest overall price.
For what we're getting.
For what we're getting, yeah.
Correct.
Are all the items, the accessories, also going through the piggyback? In other words, besides the vehicles, are they all matched too?
The, well, the, the state contract provides us the base price, as far, they don't provide the, the options. So that's why we reached out to DeValle Ford, for, you know, for the matching base price. But of course, you know, the options are in question. So, like I said, as far as we can, we can reach out to the other two vendors that are in the state contract, and compare their, their, their same options as well, and see where we come back. We did not include that in this packet, because we were looking for the lowest base model. But, you know, they, you know, looking at the options, we can also reach out to the other two and get comparable pricing.
Yeah, I'd like to see a total apples-to-apples comparison across the vendors, whatever they may be. Just because I know they can charge different, the, the state contract is for the base price vehicle, but they can play with the options and it can swing. Now, will it swing $10,000? Probably not, but...
Yep, that's, that's an issue. Like I said, the, there's only two other vendors on the state contract that we can actually reach out to. So it's not an issue to reach out to those two vendors and, and bring this back at the, you know, next agenda.
And this price also includes the maintenance program?
On page 144, the additional warranty prices are included. That would be added to the total price of each truck, but it...
What is the total amount of what budgeted, please?
We're budgeted for 98 for both these trucks, so we have enough, we have enough to add an additional warranty to both of them and still be under what we were budgeted for. We just wanted to include the different, the different types of warranty that comes with them. So we pulled the, the four best options that they, that this particular vendor had.
I think we should motion to table this and bring it back at the next meeting with all the other additional information.
Can we do that by consensus? I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah, I'm in agreement too.
Yep. All right, so we're going to close that item at this point. At this time, we're going to move on to the next item, which is the consideration of holiday fireworks. And I wanted to pass that along to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We reached out to a number of fireworks companies. We've got positive responses from two, Orlando Special Effects and Ashley Pyrotechnics. Ashley Pyrotechnics is a little bit cheaper. It works out to about $1,000 a minute and we'd ask them to give us prices for a show somewhere between 15 and 20 minutes. They put a map in, both are, are doing basically the same show. They'd put fireworks on a barge, they'd have security, insurance, all of the, and electronic detonation. They'd ask for some support from our fire department, standby to deal with problems should they arise. It looks to me like the, Ashley Pyrotechnics is maybe a little bit cheaper, but I just wanted to get your guidance before I go secure a bunch of fireworks to make sure that you are still okay with that, that you still want to have a fireworks show on, on December 18th.
We have a fire bug now too, don't we? Put out there by the barge?
Thanks, Kevin.
Very well. On this, there were, it looked like the price is probably going to depend on dates that we select as well, correct?
We asked them to give us prices for December 18th.
I, I saw the, the date. I, I guess the first item for consideration, is everybody okay with the date?
And if I remember correctly, we did ask about New Year's Eve and they said, forget it.
Okay.
And so this was kind of our fallback position, that this was tied to some other activities in the area and...
Is that, that's a Saturday night, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. And then we, we budgeted for this as well, didn't we, this year?
Yes, $12,000.
For a 12-minute show? Okay. Well, I, I certainly, I think it's important for our community to start having community events as, as hopefully we, we move away from COVID as, as much as we can. You know, the events that we had were, were really nice events before, you know, we had the COVID pandemic and, and I'd really like to see us get back to some of those events. So I'm, I'm certainly for this. The issue isn't just whether or not to have the event, but the, the price. But I think our citizens would probably like to see a fireworks show, so I think this would be money well spent. So, you know, I really like the idea. You know, I think the prices are competitive and I would certainly be for this. So I just wanted to put that out there and...
I think the prices have pretty much stayed the same. If I remember, it was always about $1,000 per minute when we've done it in the past.
Yep.
And we have neglected, you know, we have, it's been a few years since we've actually put something together, so I, I agree with you on that. I also thought it would be a good time to bring back up possible, look into the things that we started to look into, like movies in the park and things like that. As we're bringing people together, the fall time is a good time to be outside here, so something to consider as well.
And with, with the pandemic being outside, having outside events is the best way to go anyway, so, you know, with COVID, outdoor events seem, seem to be the more popular way to go.
I have some mixed feelings on, on this. You know, I understand, you know, you know, doing something for our citizens, but I feel that we could do more with $12,000 instead of 12 minutes. I, I do know CAC would like to do some other gatherings promoting our city through a craft show or, or other things like that. I, there's a part of me that I would like to see this money go to something that we will get better use out of and then it disappearing in, in 12 minutes. But I, I do believe, you know, working with our CAC and to promote our city in a couple of different venues on, on different weekends, I think we'll get more out of our money going that route, promoting our city and as opposed to everything going up in smoke.
Well, on that note, is there any way to do both, to have a CAC event at the same time as the fire? Because normally we draw people from all over the place for fireworks. They come from Newport Ritchie and Hudson and Holiday and so you, you get that promotion from the outside coming in as well as our citizens enjoy it. But if, if you have all the people gathered anyways for the fireworks, which is only going to be a 15-minute show, it looks like, why not have another event from the CAC going on so you, you kind of have both going at the same time? I don't know if that's too much or if that's something that can be worked out.
And this is also going to be in lieu of our, generally it's always been 4th of July, right around 4th of July, so we won't have anything for the 4th of July then.
I'm a little bit in, I'm in line with what you're saying. I think $12,000, thereabouts, 15,000, whatever the case is, on December 18th, which is nice, but doesn't really align to anything, I guess, sort of New Year's, maybe Christmas, maybe whatever else you want. To me, it's an odd time for the fireworks and the monies could be better assigned to maybe some other function or added to a future function that the city does have, maybe, you know, a 4th of the July celebration in Waterfront Park that doesn't have fireworks or whatever. You know, to, to me, I'm kind of in alignment that $12,000 could be better spent for the citizens in some kind of function instead of going up in smoke on and off time.
That having been said, since we only have one fireworks display budgeted, would you guys prefer to maybe discuss doing it on the 4th instead or around the 4th? Like historically, we've always done it around the 4th.
I thought there was some problem with getting people that they were already booked out that far. Was that the case? You know? No, we were looking at...
For last year or not for this year?
Yeah, for last year we...
I know, but I thought they might have been because of COVID and everything got pushed off. I thought there was some reason they were...
No, I thought we asked about New Year's for this year and they said, forget about New Year's because that's booked, but what about next July 4th and making it a 20-minute thing and maybe a bunch of other stuff going on?
Having another event out there, correct?
Yeah.
Well, July would be better, but we're still spending the money, so that's against Tom's input as well.
No, well, I mean, I'm taking, I'm saying take this 12,000, add it to this, because this is from the, this current budget year, not this next budget year, correct?
No.
Or am I got my...
This is the next year's budget.
This is next year's budget year? Oh.
This budget ends September 30th, the current budget.
Well, then I'm against shooting it up in smoke when we can better use $12,000 for something else.
Would you be for it if it was on the 4th of July? I guess that's the question.
I don't know, maybe I'm looking for more, you know, the 15-minute fireworks is great and it is a draw. I agree, but is there an opportunity to make it something more, working with CAC? And let's do something big to hopefully be through COVID for once and for all at that point, but, you know, make something that ends with the fireworks instead of it being the event.
No, that's what I was suggesting. If you had an event down there for CAC and then the fireworks, and by the way, when we do the fireworks, every business that's down in the waterfront overlay district, they have bands going, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff going on.
Yeah.
And it does draw crowds. So if you wanted to plan something bigger, the 4th of July makes more sense.
It, it, yeah, it does. Speaking of that, I mean, I don't see there's any reason why we can't ask some of the businesses down there to participate.
Sure.
I mean, let's start planning, the planning now for the 4th.
That's what I'm saying, so if it makes sense, if we're going to do it out into July, then we have time to do that.
And maybe we can then work with the city and make, make something really big in Waterfront Park.
And maybe see if the CAC, you know, wants to come up with some suggestions on what they want to do to promote the city. Because it, that event brings everybody in, so it's a time to promote the city and, and it puts us on the map, at, at least in, in our area. Because people come to the city, they, they frequent the, you know, the restaurants down there, they, they golf cart it over from Newport Ritchie and it's just, the, the last one I went to was, was packed. I mean, it was just a ton of people out there from all...
So can we table this and, and let's get some involvement with CAC and...
Continue, continue.
Well, what I'd like to do is see if we can give, see if we can get, start getting prices on the actual 4th or the weekend around the 4th, because we're going to have to book that out early.
Now.
Like now.
Right, right, so, you know, I, I think that's a better idea.
Yeah, I just think December 18th is such an off time for it with what everyone expects.
So we, by consensus, we're going to shoot for the 4th? Is that okay?
Yeah, we're going to push this off till we get further information, correct?
Yes.
We'll just put it on the block, dude. Yeah, yeah. We'll reach out to the vendors and make sure the prices are the same or make sure we know what the prices are and if possible, secure the date. So I think I have a good idea of my guidance.
The only item I put to that, I know we're talking about the 4th. I know there's always the discussions between Newport Ritchie and all the locals that we don't overlap each other.
So I think we should...
Make sure we're first.
Yeah, I think we should pick our date and then tell everybody this is when we're doing it.
Until he finds out they're, they are, have already booked everybody.
That's, I was just going to say it's a Monday.
So most people are going to be that weekend before...
So you want to do on the second, on the Saturday or something like that?
Yeah. So that closes item number nine. Item number 10 is a reimbursement request for attorney's fees for defense of an ethics complaint by myself, the mayor. Before I pass this over, this is an item that I'll, I'll direct traffic in the meeting, but I'm going to abstain from voting based on conflict. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Can you hear me? Claim for legal, claim for reimbursement of legal fees made by the mayor to the city manager who sent it to me. I prepared a rather lengthy memo here. I can tell you what the standard is if you want me to, but basically it, the standard, whether the city is obligated to pay these legal fees is this matter, and I presume everyone's read the, the ethics complaint. Arise out of or in connection with the performance of official duties and serves a public purpose. I wish I could give you more guidance than that. You're going to say, Jim, that's pretty vague kind of stuff, but every one of these types of claims, they're somewhat routine, involves a different factual scenario. In other words, you could see that from some of the attorney general's opinions I have. So there's no button I can press and say, you're, you're going to have to pay this or don't pay this, you need to kind of just look at it and that's the standard that's applied. And, and counsel makes the decision, the city manager can't make the decision. I'll field any questions if you want.
I have a question. In the past, you've been here a long time, we had similar ethics complaint and how was it handled in the past?
The, the only one I know of was council member, it had gone to the hearing, the final hearing, it was substantially more than this and the, they were negotiating a while, it was probably much more than this. It went to a final hearing and it was one of the council members, not the mayor, and they eventually reached a resolution with the attorney on the fees, I believe, or, or paid them, okay? I think it was like $38,000, it was a number like that. But it went to a trial, this is less than this. That's the only one I know of here.
Okay.
They're pretty in the paper all the time. It's the only one I have knowledge of.
All right, thank you. I have a question. You said in, I believe you stated in the conduction of their duties, correct? Is that the terminology that's used?
Yes, I'll read it right to you. Arise out of or in connection with the performance of their official duties and serve a public purpose. That's, that's been the law for a long time and pretty much what that means is, if you read some of these attorney general opinions, so you're at a council meeting and somebody doesn't like what you said. It's a council meeting, running a council, being at a council meeting, whether a council member or mayor, is public purpose. Do you understand what I mean? So unless there's, in other words, unless there was something wrong in what was done or it was corruption or misuse of office, you know, if it was in that scenario and it doesn't meet the standard of it was a misuse of office, that was during a meeting. So if they do something ethically at their house, that's not a public meeting, okay? So in this scenario here, you have some of the complaint was some things that happened at a council meeting that would be at the meeting and I don't think there was, there was no findings that there was anything wrong there. But the other was had to do with a golf cart, which was not at a meeting. Okay, so then you got to read all this and say, well, you know, was the golf cart being used for a public purpose and the, I guess it would be the cancer crawl and all of that. So, you know, that, that's not as black and white as the second issue of, you know, and they're intertwined. Does that help at all in terms of answering what a public purpose is?
And in connection with their duties would be normally aligned with what's in the charter for the duties of a mayor?
That's exactly right. Some of the cases will actually go through that. Yeah, pretty much what the charter, that's exactly right, right.
So if it's in connection with the duties underneath the charter and within council, then it's wholly covered or coverable. If it's outside of being an "and," then it becomes less clear.
That, that's correct. Right, that's exactly right. Sometimes you'll see some of these cases, they'll talk, or at least in some of the references, attorney general's opinion, they'll talk about paying portions of them. Do you understand what I mean? If they're not, they're not sure, if, you know, how, how far it is, you know, in other words, what are the duties? Well, you know, the duties, you know, going out to, you know, you say something to somebody at a flag-waving ceremony, you know, that's ceremonial, even if you're not the mayor doing it. So they pretty stretched that pretty far, but yes, that, that's the line. That's as good as you could put the line.
I think some of these are pretty tough because when you're up here, any one of us could be slapped within ethics for almost pure malice in some cases. And I'd like to think that, and some of us aren't, wouldn't be in a position to, to afford these type of legal fees. Obviously, this one's not, but they can get extensive. I would, I would think that, I would hope that in most cases like this, that the city would, would step up for that. So that, I would go that direction because like I said, these ethic complaints are easy to bring and can be quite costly.
What I've read here is that the State of Florida Commission on Ethics found no probable cause on, on the original complaint, regardless of what took place leading up, but the... cause on, on the original complaint, regardless of what took place leading up. But the, they investigated, investigated the complaint itself. And what I'm reading and understanding is that no probable cause was found, meaning it's over because the mayor was exonerated is what I'm reading. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve reimbursement of the legal fees for Mayor Scott Tremley.
I'll second. Before we put it to a vote, I want to open this to the public if anyone would like to speak. Mr. Mueller, come on up. Welcome. Say your name and address, please.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. Just a couple of questions that I might have, maybe pertain your interest. Does the city have any errors in emissions insurance that would cover this? And the second question would be, is there, is there any professional courtesy that the attorney can knock his bill down? It's always worth a question to ask. Thank you.
Good point. Would this be covered by any insurance?
No.
Any further discussion, or do you guys want to put it to a vote?
Ready?
This is a vote I'm abstaining. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And I don't know if that passes or not. You have a two to one vote?
Yeah, it's a majority, right?
Majority?
Okay.
Motion passes. At this time, any old business to come before council here?
None.
None. I'm looking for motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.